Go ahead and select.
I found my camera ready. Come on, it's there.
Okay.
I know.
Oops, sorry.
Hi, oh, okay.
Very nice, thank you. Well, this is my seat.
That's Larry's seat. Okay, welcome and good evening, everyone, to the Planning Commission meeting of February 13th, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Kurtz.
Here.
Vice Chair Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Do. Commissioner Uber. Commissioner Hoover's Mark Dabson.
Thank you. If you'll all please rise for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity and the freedoms to hold this public meeting tonight. We ask that you bless this meeting and everyone in attendance so that the decisions that are made are in the best interest of this city and its citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we've got a couple of new planning commissioners that are going to be coming in tonight, and that means that a couple of us will be leaving tonight. We have a special presentation.
Good evening, commissioners, audience members. It's a pleasure for me to present today to our departing commissioner Lionel Do, so if I could have you come forward, sir. Have a quick presentation and a presentation of a plaque for you. Commissioner Do has been with us for four years, serving his term under Councilman Negretti's appointment. And we put together a little snapshot of what's occurred within the last four years. And surprisingly, we're still kind of coming out of the Great Recession, but a lot has occurred. So here's a little snapshot. We've added over a million square feet of industrial. Close to 700 single-family residential. Little over 266,000 square feet of commercial space and 40 units of multifamily. Added to the tenants within our city, here's a snapshot of some of them. We don't have all of them here, but this is a snapshot of some of the ones that have come in along Restaurant Row, along the freeway. Also at the Walmart Shopping Center on 395 with the Les Schwab Tire Center. You are also part of reviewing projects that are still to come to our city. Currently in plan check or under construction are the tenants that you see before you here. You also worked on ensuring that we're developing in an orderly fashion. And so we've worked out on tackling land uses. When you first started, this was a major topic of refining some of the uses and making sure that we have good quality of life and good tenants in our city, addressing problematic uses. We also had a mobile workshop down the hill and addressed creating more quality standards for plan unit developments, which was eventually adopted by the City Council and is currently in our code. We adopted a climate action plan, and part of that was screening tables, which allow developers to streamline to ensure they're reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. Recently, we updated our circulation element, so now future streets all will have planned bike paths. And then most recently, we updated the Old Town Specific Plan, which sets the tone and a good foundation for the revitalization of that area. So Mr. Lionel Do, I would like to present you with this plaque. And thank you so much for your contribution to this community, and we hope to see you out there and about in the community.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the citizens of the city of Victorville. I want to thank Councilman Negretti for appointing me. I want to thank all my supporters and the staff especially for their expertise in moving the city of Victorville forward. I grew up in the Commonwealth of Virginia and in the city of Norfolk. And within the city of Norfolk, my mother had me to witness the burial of General MacArthur. And so I'd like to read for the record a statement by General MacArthur. He said, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader. He becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." I thank the council, Councilman Negretti, the staff, and all citizens of the city of Victorville. And I bid you Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lionel. All right, next I'd like to move on to Commissioner Paula Porter. Paula's current role serving Victorville has been with the Planning Commission since 2005. But before that, she worked as a city employee and was city clerk for 10 years. So she has a wealth of knowledge of this organization, and she's dedicated her life to bettering this community. I started, I think I was just young when I started, I think I still had hair. So you've been with us for a long time, and I appreciate all of the guidance that you've provided, myself and also staff throughout the years. So there's a snapshot here in 14 years, and it's quite dramatic what's occurred with the city. Over 7,000 single-family homes, that's a large number in 14 years, especially when the city total has about 28,000 single-family units throughout the city. So we've added over 1,000 multifamily, over 4.5 million square feet of industrial, and over 2 million square feet of commercial. So you have been busy. We all have. A snapshot of some of the commercial endeavors that have occurred. Notably, the mall had a major facelift, and we added some new tenants there. We built out, which isn't on here, some larger shopping centers. There's two Walmart centers that were built within the last 14 years, which added some of the tenants along Restaurant Row, such as Sonic and Cracker Barrel. There was also further expansion of our auto mall and also industrial development up at the Southern California Logistics Airport. Again, these are also tenants that you worked on in the last couple of years that are in the pipeline and should be under construction shortly. And then guiding the future growth, we tackled last decade, the comprehensive update to our general plan. And most recently, we updated the circulation element, adding the bike lanes. The development code is consolidated and made it more user-friendly. We used to not have land use tables like this where you could look at one use and see what zones it's located in, so that was a major accomplishment. The problematic uses, as I mentioned with Lionel. Design guidelines, not only single-family design guidelines, but commercial and industrial design guidelines were developed to ensure quality development throughout the city. Plan unit development requirements, again, showing that we can raise the bar but still bring in development and get support of the building industry. Desert Gateway Specific Plan, which laid a foundation for a high-speed rail eventually in the future to connect us to Las Vegas. The Climate Action Plan, again, helps streamline the process for developers. Our non-motorized transportation plan. St. Mary's Medical Center development. If they're ready, we have the plan ready, and it's ready to build. But that was a major anchor, hopefully, for our southern part of the city when it develops. And then lastly, our Old Town Specific Plan, we look forward to implementing what the commission has recommended, ultimately has been approved. A snapshot of our population over this time. In 2005, we were at almost 95,000. Now we're close to 125,000, adding almost 30,000 residents. So there's cities out there that don't have that many, much population, but we appreciate everything that you've begun guiding the growth of the city, and we hope to see you out there. So with that, I want to recognize Paula Porter for her contributions to the city of Victorville as starting bringing us planning commissioner from 2005 to February of 2019.
She's a great mom.
I had to be a great mom because... Happy times here because it's...
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Scott. Are there any final comments from commission or from staff? Okay. Before the two of you actually step down, though, I couldn't... Have a seat. I couldn't say goodbye without sharing some thoughts on our time together at these meetings. And so I decided to write a poem for you guys, if that's okay. It's called "The Commission Meeting." Six hundred agenda pages need to be read, site plans and resolutions swirling in your head. Same old questions we keep asking of staff, it seems at times they try not to laugh. Motions made with no findings, it's typical of our journey. See the fear in the eyes of the city attorney. Massive environmental report so bland, good job on pretending to actually understand. Hey, Commissioner Porter, I think I forgot my pen. Don't worry, she has a supply bag with at least 10. She has colored pencils. She has colored pencils and school supplies in that bag. Just look. Does she think our agenda package is a giant coloring book? Nobody's laughing that much, oh great. Two hours of testimony with booing and clapping. Halfway through, we noticed Commissioner Do was napping. Now you're leaving, now leaving the commission has you grieving, but just think of all the fun things you can now do on Wednesday evening. Your service has been grand, professional with tact. Now we can hang out, no violating the Brown Act. Thank you both. Okay, now we can swear in our new commissioners.
I would like to call up Denise Wells. Denise, I ask you to raise your right hand. I'm going to read the oath and then just respond at your own free will after I'm done. All right. Do you Denise Wells solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that, and will will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Well, congratulations, and I'll just need you to sign the oath and you could take your seat behind the dais. I now like to call up Robert Harriman.
Sorry, I came from work, so I'm in manager's jacket.
All right, Robert, please raise your right hand and I'll read the oath and respond at your free will when I'm done. Do you Robert Harriman solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and will will well and discharge, will will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Okay, congratulations and welcome. Do we need to take an updated roll call? Please.
Chair Kurth.
Here.
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Harriman.
Here.
Commissioner Wells.
Present.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Huber is marked absent.
Thank you. At this time, it would be typical that we would call, call for nominations for chair and vice chair, but I believe that since we are missing one of the five commissioners, Commissioner Huber, I would like to make a motion to continue the nomination process, tell our next meeting in hopes that we would have a full commission. That would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Marsh to continue the nominations for chair and vice chair to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We have a, we need to work on the approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from December 12, 2018. And I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Marsh to approve the minutes of the December 12, 2018 regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's, that's because obviously you weren't at that meeting.
Motion carries with Commissioner Wells and Commissioner Harriman abstaining.
Thank you. Starting out with agenda item number one, staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman Kurth. Item number one is a cell tower proposed west of 395 and north of the California Aqueduct. Staff is requesting a continuance to the March 13 meeting to allow time for the applicant and the Victorville Water District to work out access issues and co-location issues with the tower. So again, we're requesting a continuance to the March 13 hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on agenda item number one. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number one? Seeing no one, I'll close, I'll leave the public hearing open and I'm going to continue this, I'll make a motion to continue this item to March 13, 2019 meeting.
I second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Wells to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLAN 19-00001 to the March 13, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number two, please.
Thank you Chairman Kurth. Item number two is case PLAN 18-00053. It is an amendment to Title II and Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption introducing various amendments for consideration including but not limited to administration definitions accessory dwelling units, accessory structures, site plan application, permit expiration, inspections, and timing of development impact fee payments. This is applicable citywide. The Planning Commission is a recommending body to the city council on these code amendments. I'd also like to note for the record that there were some minor clarifying language added on the add-on packet that the commission has received. There's also some available in the lobby area which further clarify, there's some highlighted sections that provided further clarity to the code amendments. These were recommendations of the city attorney. Essentially, these code amendments are brought forward to adapt to various state assembly bills and senate bills that have gone into effect. A large portion of these code amendments address accessory dwelling units and then also some updates to building code standards such as expiration dates being extended from six months to 12 months. As presented with the revised resolution, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve these resolutions as noted.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing on agenda item number two. Is there anyone to speak to us on number two? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
I'll make a motion to adopt the updated resolution number P-19-005 with the attachment A and P-19-006, attachment B recommending the city council approval of case number PLAN 18-00053.
Great, and I think we need to add on.
Adding the environmental assessment motion that we find the code amendment exempt pursuant to section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells with a second by Commissioner Marsh to approve case PLAN 18-00053 to recommend city council approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, staff report, please.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Agenda item number three is planning case number PLAN 18-00050. It's a site plan and conditional use permit with an environmental exemption to allow for car wash located at 15570 Park Avenue. This is the previous location of the CoCo's Restaurant, which is just southeast of the intersection of Park Avenue and Palmdale Road. The project site is located within the Office Campus District of the Civic Center Community Sustainability Plan, and the proposal consists of a manned car wash facility approximately 30, 100 square feet in size. The subject uses neither, is not permitted in the underlying zone district, however, because the specific plan is geared towards sustainability, there's allowances provided in the specific plan that provide for conditional use permits for non-permitted uses should the use meet certain, certain sustainability benchmarks. In this case, the applicant has chose to build the project to Tier One CalGreen Energy Efficiency Standards, which will ensure the development is, is constructed in a manner that exceeds typical building department requirements or building code requirements, I'm sorry. So that is an allowance provided by the specific plan, which allows for the provision of a conditional use permit to allow the non-permitted use. As proposed, the site is categorically exempt from CEQA, section 15332, infill development as it complies with the general plan standards, has no value as wildlife habitat, and has no significant effects on traffic noise, air quality, or water quality. Additionally, as conditioned, the proposal meets all the major development standards of Title 16 and the specific plan, including excess parking, adequate site access, a site plan design that minimizes noise on adjacent properties and landscaping that meets Title 16 requirements. The architecture as well is in accord with the commercial design guidelines, as well as the design guidelines that are outlined in the Civic Center Sustainability Plan, which utilizes an architecture design that will blend with surrounding developments and has CMU block, hung awnings, and steel canopies. That being said, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the required findings for a conditional use permit as required by Title 16, supports the project as conditioned.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I'd just like to get some clarity on the entrance to the car wash from Palmdale Boulevard that goes through that gas station. Can you just kind of clarify, is that going, is that going to be a preventable traffic situation? People making lefts, people making rights from that onto Palmdale Road?
I'd be happy to answer that question. So we had a supplemental memo added to your agenda. In that memo, the project has been conditioned to restrict ride-in, ride-out movements only with a onsite sign installed at the exit. We can certainly pass that comment on to Caltrans, but any, any changes in Palmdale Road would be subject to Caltrans approval because it's a state highway. But we could certainly pass that concern on to them and they may decide to further restrict movements. The, the only other thought I have is since that's been an existing use for some time, I don't know how they're going to view that because in essence, it's been, there's been an access there for not only the service station but also the adjacent uses that have a reciprocal access. But we can certainly pass that comment on to Caltrans, that concern.
I have a question about the, is, when they demolished the building, the existing building, are they also going to demolish the ancient block wall that's on the north
I can answer that. Yes, it was identified and conditioned that they would remove that low block wall along the frontage.
And I had one, maybe just more of a clarification, knowing that this is in the fairly new Civic Center specific plan. The, I understand that it, I guess it would look at as a bit of a trade-off on the, the environmental project standards with CalGreen because they are not, technically not allowed in this zoning without a conditional use permit and at that point, it jumps up to the higher tier if they want to develop? Am I understanding that right?
So the use in the, in the underlying Office Campus District is not permitted. However, because the specific plan is geared towards sustainability, if developers choose to build at a higher tier, CalGreen code, or if they maybe chose like a lead standard to get their project more efficient, built to a higher efficiency level than would otherwise be required, our specific plan takes note of that and tries to give incentives to build at that higher level. So one of those incentives when you build at that, that higher tier is to ask for a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone district via a conditional use permit. So it still provides the Planning Commission the opportunity to review the use and make sure there's no negative effects to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as a conditional discretionary use, but does give the developer the opportunity to ask for that use.
So that's kind of, I understand, thanks. And that's kind of how we'll, we'll probably see this a little bit more maybe in the future. We might have a use that comes into one of those specific zone districts, Major Artorial there or, or Major Collector Street and, but they don't, not, they don't quite fit, they're not allowed in that zone, but it may seem to fit perfectly with that neighborhood and the surrounding uses. So at that time, would we still, once again, use that mechanism of jumping them up to the Tier One to allow them to?
Yes, they, they would have that option to, to build at that higher level of efficiency if they chose to, to get that use. And, and you're correct, in this case, a car wash seems to fit with the land use existing along Palmdale Road, a state highway route with gas stations that already have car washes, retail businesses, restaurants, and so on and so.
And maybe just a quick example of, in this case, or in maybe a typical case, what would, what would be some of the upgraded standards, just for us lay, laypeople, as an example?
It would be energy efficiency, so utilizing, yes, less energy at peak powers. It could be energy generation onsite, water, water-wise landscaping and water-efficient fixtures that would utilize less water, things like that. water-efficient fixtures that would utilize less water, um, things like that, built into the actual development. So, um, where one project that is building under typical code would utilize, for instance, a hundred units of energy, this new unit under the tier one would utilize seventy-five or, or, or sixty on typical. So, it would save energy, um, and therefore meet that higher tier of development standards.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and, and, um, open up the public hearing on item number three. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number three? Okay, uh, seeing no one, I'll, uh, close the public hearing and, and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Ki- uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to, uh, make a motion to find the project categorically exempt under CEQA guidelines, section 15332, entitled, uh, "In-Full Development Projects" and adopt resolution number P-19-001 approving the site plan portion of case number PLA-N-18-00050, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt resolution number P-19-002 approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLA-N, um, 18-00050, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Wells to approve case PLA-N-18-00050 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um, agenda item number four, um, uh, they're asking, uh, for a continuance on this proposal. Is there any information that staff needs to give on this one?
Thank you, Chairman Kirth. Uh, this item, uh, was brought to us, uh, by the applicant, Sterling Capital Investments. Uh, they're, they first brought this proposal forward for close to a million-square-foot industrial building on a speculative basis. Uh, they would like to, um, have additional time to engage with prospective tenants and therefore are asking that, uh, you close the public hearing, uh, without action, uh, so that they can, um, uh, re-advertise and re-notice this project at a future date.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Once this item has been advertised, I'll open up the, uh, public hearing if there's anyone to speak to us on agenda item number four. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, right, on this? I'll close the public hearing and make a motion that we take, uh, um, no action allowing the applicant to re-advertise and re-notice the project for an undetermined, uh, planning commission date in the future.
We have a motion by Chair Kirth with a second by Commissioner Marsh to close the public hearing and continue case PLN-17-00028 and re-advertise to a date to be con- to be determined in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um, agenda item number five, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kirth. Uh, the new business item, number five, is related to adopting, uh, planning commission rules, uh, pursuant to, um, our municipal code, the planning commission is required to adopt, uh, rules for the transaction of its business. It's been almost eleven years since the rules have been updated. Uh, we brought forward a draft of the proposed rules for consideration, uh, late last year, and we have brought forward a final version for your review, um, comments, and hopefully ultimate approval. And we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I had, um, I had just one, uh, question that was, um, under, um, section number eight, and it would actually be on page four. Was it, section number eight, um, paragraph four, um, talks about what the commission would do if they, uh, the ability to move forward on un-agendaized items, and A says based on an emergency, and then, um, B talks about, uh, the same thing if there is a need to take immediate action, and the commission finds that there's a need to take immediate action. I was just kind of wondering, in that case, which I don't think we've seen too often, probably won't see, but in the future, what would the difference between those, those two be?
That's actually a, it's actually a, a good question. I would need to relook at my section of the Brown Act that constitute, defines what constitutes the emergency, but subdivision B, um, is, is generally the procedure that's used, um, for adding an urgency item to the agenda, and an, an emergency would be, and probably this is more suited to the city council, um, maybe some type of civ- um, civil unrest, or perhaps an emergency such as an earthquake, that there was something that maybe the planning commission needed to do. That's the difference between an emergency, and the second one is more of what's called an urgency item, something that comes to the attention of the commission after they had the opportunity to, uh, after the agenda was posted, so there was no ability to, um, to actually post it. So, that's why you want to have those heightened votes, so that, uh, make sure it really is something urgent that needs to be done. So, it's the difference between emergency and urgency.
Okay.
Does that help?
I think, yeah, I think so. I was just more curious than anything.
No, it's a, it's a fantastic question.
And that's probably why, under B, that we see that there, there's more clarification on what is the requirement of the actual voting members' bodies on that one versus the flat-out emergency, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you've got flood, you know, all, all of those things, that's, that's what your emergency type thing is.
And then item number C says, on that same paragraph, eight-four, um, it can be un-agendaized if the item was posted for a prior meetings occurring now, at a prior meeting occurring not more than five calendar days prior to the date action is taken on the item, and at the prior meeting, the item was continued to the meeting at which it's being taken. If something was continued from a meeting, um, to this meeting within five days, wouldn't it have had to have been agendized in order to do that? In what case would we not see it agendized?
Well, it would have been agendized in the, in the first instance, but, um-
Then continued to this-
Right, it would have been continued, it's just got to do with the number of days. Sort of like if you adjourn a meeting, and if you recall it within five days, there's a posting that's required, but you wouldn't, I think it's got to do with having something adjourned, so you wouldn't have to re-
Because the, the public notice wouldn't have had enough time or something in between?
Yeah, it's a very, it's a technical, it's, it's a technical, like, we can totally check that, but I think it's a technical Brown Act, um, provision, so I thought it'd be good to have it.
I'm not real concerned, I just wondered how that worked, if that ever did, um, arise.
It's pretty rare.
And that, it looked like, to me, that everything else, uh, you know, looked, looked really clean to me. Um, we've updated a little bit of our, uh, of our public, uh, um, hearing, um, order, and we added the, um, ex parte contacts, which we've, um, it's kind of new to, to the order to actually call that out before, um, agenda items, along with our Brown Act, uh, disqualifications, or if we have bias, or conflict of interest. Is everyone, is the commission clear with, um, what ex parte contacts means?
Yes.
It's, um, I wonder if, um, if Tara, could you give a quick?
Sure.
Since this is kind of new for our-
Absolutely, it's, it's, it's a good, it's good timing. Um, ex part, the, the nature of the planning commission hearings are that you decide upon the evidence that's in front of you in the staff reports, or what staff gives, um, as an, as an oral, um, presentation. Um, in some cases, since we, you know, we live, we live in the city and we, and we are around, if for some reason you made a site visit, or if you, um, happen to have contact with one of the applicants or a proponent of the project, and they wanted to, to speak with you about it, obviously, the best thing to do would be to recommend they come to the meeting, or perhaps send, um, you know, written correspondence that could be presented to the entire, uh, planning commission. But if you did have a contact like that, it's important, right before the public hearing, uh, for a commissioner to disclose that, so that everyone knows what you saw and what you heard and, and how you feel about it. If for some reason that changed your mind as to whether or not you could vote on it, obviously, one, one could abstain. But that keeps transparency, um, as a primary concern, and just ensures that the public knows that, you know, where everything, everything's up front and above board.
Yep, and I've had, I've had that happen before, where a developer might call me two days before a meeting and just say, "Hey, I just wanted to make sure that you know everything about the project, because I want, you know, you to be aware." Um, in that case, I would come back and, and, uh, before that actual item, I would say, you know, "I've read the staff report, we're taking testimony today, but I also got a call from the developer, and he just wanted to know if I needed any more information," which I did not, "but I need to disclose that." And that's the time we would do it, right up front.
Yeah, right, 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 before you open the public-
Along with we have to disclose a, a financial, um, interest, or ask to recuse ourselves. It'd be at that timing, so that's just a, uh, housekeeping thing.
That, that's prior to anything being said?
Yeah, usually we'll say, um, "It's time for agenda number X, staff report," and at that part, we jump in and go, "Excuse me, I would like to disclose," or "I need to leave the dais." Any more discussion? If, if not, I think we're ready for, um, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission adopt new planning commission rules by approving resolution P-19-007, uh, attachment A.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Wells to adopt the new planning commission rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, it's now time to, uh, um, in compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the planning commission to make time available for ti- members of the public, uh, to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to us tonight? And so, uh, that's pretty it, pretty much it for the meeting, and at this time, we wrap it up with, um, opportunity for, uh, planning commissioners, uh, to present any items of, of interest. Oh, we do have- Welcome. During, uh, we're in, uh, public comment, so, uh, Mr. Godina?
Yes, good afternoon. Um, I noticed that, uh, two commissioners, uh, uh, left and two commissioners, uh, took their place. The two commissioners that left were involved in the Old Town specific plan, so I wanted to see if, what update and what, uh, continuance was gonna happen with the Old Town specific plan and where we're at, because, uh, we haven't, the community hasn't heard any new information on what is happening with the, uh, lighting and the, uh, the, uh, amount of money that was already proposed and planned for it. So, if we can have some update on that, please. Thank you.
I believe, I believe the, the, uh, specific plan that we updated was approved and adopted, is that correct, recently?
Yes, the, uh, the specific plan, uh, was adopted late last year and became effective mid-January. Um, but just to give an update, there are, um, some items that we're working on. Um, the one that's come to the forefront, which will actually be, uh, should be advertised tomorrow, um, is a public workshop, uh, with the city council that'll occur on, um, the twenty-sixth of this month, at five PM in the, uh, Transportation Center lobby. That is addressing lighting concerns. Um, the city council, um, did appropriate some money, uh, that came from the, um, Street Lighting Assessment District, um, so we're looking to get more public input on how to use those funds, where to use them, um, in the Old Town area.
All right, um, any commissioner comments? We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Marsh.
Um, just like to, to say welcome to, uh, Bob and, uh, Denise, and, uh, this is, uh, the, the first meeting of the new, of the new year, right? Yeah, yeah, so, look forward to a good year.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wells?
I want to say thank you for this opportunity, looking forward to being on the commission, bringing the city forward in the positive directions.
Commissioner Harriman?
Uh, I'd kind of like to say the same. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to, uh, finally, uh, get involved at an upper, higher level than I have been. Uh, maybe take me a little while to, uh, blend in, uh, as far as knowing what I'm doing, but I, I do, uh, know what I read. So, up here, I may be a little bit out of sync, but I will catch on real fast. Thank you.
Yeah, you will. And, uh, thank you for the involvement, both of you. Um, any, uh, comments or, um, from staff?
Just wanted to welcome the new commissioners and look forward to the new year.
And it, you said there's a, uh, reception right after, right, back here? Okay. With that, uh, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.